Okay, we'll call the June 22 meeting of the Peterstownship Council to order. A roll call, Mr. Lauer.
Mrs. Merrill.
President.
Mr. Steigl.
Here.
Mr. Curry.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Berquist.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to defy out of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is a public hearing. Proposed ordinance amending the Peterstownship Code of Ordinances, Chapter 440 zoning, as well as Chapter 195 fees. Mr. Lauer?
Yes. At the time of the adoption of the 2020 Peterstownship budget, I had indicated that early in 2020, we would undertake a comprehensive review of the fees, the township charges for various municipal services. As a result of that review, council at its February 24 meeting enacted a revised fee schedule for park and recreation fees. In the same timeframe, the township staff was completing a review of fees related to various permits issued by the planning department. Because the proposed changes involve amending the zoning ordinance, a public hearing before council is required. That hearing was scheduled to occur on March 23, but was canceled as a result of the restrictions imposed in response to COVID-19. We are now in a position to move forward with consideration of two proposed ordinance. The first ordinance amends the zoning ordinance. The second proposes, proposed ordinance, amends the planning department fees. So, within the zoning ordinance, there are two changes that are being proposed. Within the zoning ordinance, there's a provision for water course and drain permits. We do not have jurisdiction in that area. The jurisdiction in that area is reserved for the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. So therefore, what we're proposing is that the references to water course and drain permits be removed from the zoning ordinance. The second change in the zoning ordinance is modifying the definition of accessory building to include accessory structures. So, the current ordinance only provides for a definition of the term of accessory building. The term accessory structures was added and the definition was clarified with the addition of a statement that says accessory buildings, accessory structures shall also include, but not be limited to retaining walls four feet or more in height, sheds, pools, gazebos, pool houses, detached garages, greenhouses, detached decks, sports courts, and any other similar building or structure. So the intent isn't to be a comprehensive list, but to be a list that provides a general definition so that when we have other structures, that they would be included. The proposed changes in the fee ordinance, the first is, again, to reflect that the term for which the fee is being charged is not only an accessory building, but an accessory structure. The size was modified in the ordinance to be consistent with the existing definition in the zoning ordinance, which is 120 square feet. There is a provision in state law that levies a building permit fee by the Department of Labor and Industry, and we're required to collect that fee and pass it on. The fee is actually very nominal in nature, but it changes from time to time, and rather calling out a specific fee, we're proposing to change the ordinance to indicate that any and all fees charged by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania related to the issuing of a building permit shall be passed through to the building permit applicant. Again, there is a fee currently that is called out for water course and drain permits. We're suggesting that be removed. There is a fee that's called out for fences and walls, and what we're saying is that a fence or wall that is four feet and under will have a called out fee of $50. That's currently $30. The fee associated with walls over four feet is going to be deleted because they're now treated as accessory structures, and in point of fact, that's how the building inspector has been handling these since the change in the building code, which calls those out as a structure. In terms of sign permits, there's a flat fee for a commercial temporary sign is being increased from $15 to $25. There is a fairly long table with regard to sign permits. We've simplified that. There was a fee that was charged if a sign was illuminated of an extra $10. I'm not sure what the rationale behind that is. We have eliminated that. Occupancy fees, there's an increase in occupancies for commercial structures of an additional $15 or $25, depending on what that fee is being issued for. The zoning hearing board, the fees were increased to cover the increase in costs associated with having hearings. Residential applications, the increase was nominal from $280 to $300. For commercial applications, the cost has increased from $390 to $450, and this more or less reflects the cost of having those hearings. Although we very seldom have hearings in front of the Construction Board of Appeals, the nature of those hearings are very similar to a zoning hearing board hearing, and so therefore, we have proposed to mimic the charges that would be for a hearing in front of the zoning hearing board. Stormwater management has been handled as a fee, and we're suggesting that it, but in reality, if the fee, and it never does, cover the cost of the review, we're going back and billing people. So what we're suggesting is rather than to do that, that we handle it as an escrow deposit. The developer will still be responsible for paying all fees for the review of stormwater management plans. One of the problems we have right now is that survey monuments that are required when plans are constructed, we have a very difficult time getting developers to install those. We have a $400 escrow to do that, but that has never proven to be enough incentive to get anybody to do those. So what we would rather do is to eliminate the escrow account amounts and create a fee of $800 per monument. And then once a year, have the township engineer hire a surveying crew to come in and install those. That way, we know they get installed. The other thing is, what we've found in the past is that our cost of doing that exceeds that 400. So where a plan might call for three or four monuments, we're actually installing one or two monuments in those plans, and that's a problem for the, going forward. We have a fee that's associated with installing new street signs in residential developments. We're proposing to raise that from 175 to 250, and that's reflective of our cost of actually acquiring those signs and installing them. And then finally, with grading permits, there is a very large table that divides grading into very small increments. We're just simplifying that. It really isn't changing the cost as much as creating less categories. So, our intention is, with council's approval, is to place this on the agenda for the next meeting for action. This is not, and we suggested this back in December, you know, the largest source of fees are building permit fees, and those are not being proposed to be changed. And the reason they're not is that they are adequate to meet the cost of delivering that service, so there's no reason to change these. These fees are really going to result in more nominal changes that reflect what our costs are. They've been checked across other municipalities to make sure that they're in line. I think the most important thing from our standpoint is the fees related to monuments, because quite frankly, that's been an ongoing problem for years. So, with that, if anybody has any questions?
Counsel, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I did have a few. I had sent a list to Mr. Zook and Mr. Coons, and they were kind enough to answer them, but I had three things I'd like to clarify. I did ask about the accessory building and accessory structures, about adding the word generator, because to me, that's a piece of equipment, and it might not be apparent to people that it's a building or a structure. And there are a lot more generators being installed in the township, so I suggested that, and that's left to everyone's opinion. Another thing I'd like to ask about, the monuments you were talking about, the survey monuments, are those for the developers' property lines, or are those for the individual residents?
No, within each development, we establish permanent survey markers so that if you're a homeowner and your property needs to be surveyed, it provides a control point by which your property at some point in the future can easily be surveyed.
Okay.
So, having the right number of those is important. The fewer you have, the longer distance that surveyor has to go, and the more expensive it comes to complete the survey.
Thank you. And then the last question, I had inquired about whether or not they were going to look at changing the $25 fee for business occupancy, home occupancy. Right now, it's $25 for three-year period of time?
Yes.
Five years?
Five.
So to me, $25 for five years, I thought that that might be something we might want to look at increasing. It is a business expense to the owner. Just to me, it seems very little. I'm a business owner, I pay it, but I was shocked that it was as low as it was. So those were just three things I wanted to clarify. Do you all think that should be adjusted?
I don't know. It depends on what it actually causes. What do we do once we issue those? Do we ever monitor those?
Well, the home occupancy permits are simply to identify where these home occupations are. We don't do a lot in terms of going out. What we have from time to time is residences who have concern about activities, but that's not related to the issuance of the permit per se, if you know what I mean. It's really us responding to a complaint.
And we're charging $5 a year to issue a piece of paper.
The purpose of the business permit is really, it's a legal checkpoint to require you to be on the business rolls.
Well, and the other thing it does is that when you make that application, you know, there's a whole set of criterias that a home occupation has to have. It can't have an impact in the neighborhood. And it gives us an, if you apply ahead of time, it gives us an opportunity to check that, to make sure that you're, what you're proposing comports with what the ordinance says, but it doesn't involve us spending a whole lot of time. The number that's being charged is certainly nominal, and I don't think there's a problem increasing it, but it doesn't need to be increased substantially.
Do you then have to provide information to Keystone so that they know to check about the local services tax and all the rest of that?
We, that's one of the things that we forward on to Keystone to make sure that they have.
Okay. I just wanted to bring the issue up, but like I said, when I applied, I was surprised how low it actually was.
It does seem a little low. I mean, $5 a year.
But we don't make money.
Well, I know, but we're charging somebody to put a temporary sign out there. What are we charging them?
$20.
It's a little bit, you know what? Before this comes back to you, give us a chance to take a look at that, and we'll...
I think it's fine. Mr. Ball?
And Monica, I think you may reflect on the generators, and at the same point in time, though, I'm not able in my head to distinguish the significance of them from even an air conditioner condenser. They're not much different in size or noise, but...
But they all require permits. You know, if you, and we would handle it as accessory structure or a...
You need a permit to change your air conditioner condenser?
I don't, and I would have to ask the building inspector that, and I don't know that question, but if you go to install a generator where you don't have a generator, you're going to need an electrical inspection.
And they always, and they do also check on the setback and make sure that you're not, you know, it's not going to violate the...
If you install a condenser, you have to, it all has to be electrical inspected. To me, it's a list of many, many things that we do that, you know, they need to be inspected, and if you're going to have a pad for an air conditioner condenser, it's got to meet building setbacks also. And I mean, it's just, there's many, many, many things that go on that list, and it's one of them.
I'd have to say, I'm probably guilty of having air conditioners replaced without getting a building permit.
If it's replaced, it's not a problem.
My other question, and this goes back to a question I raised probably several years ago, the potential for solar structures, independent of being house mounted up on the roof and things of that nature. I think that needs to be comprehended as a potential structure. The only one I can think of, which is probably opposite of the high school at the moment, but...
But I would agree with you, that would be a structure.
Are those two items, are they defined in the Pennsylvania's planning code?
Well, I don't think that's where you would find it. The question is, would you find it in the building code?
It's an accessory structure. Most of the solar permits that we see are for roof mount.
I realize that.
We do see a few that are in the yards, and they get an accessory building permit.
And I do understand, just to comment on that, that we don't want to add a whole laundry list of things and try to call out everything specifically, but if you search online in the ordinances and you say generator, or you say something else, you don't always get the detail. And like I said, to me, those are not an accessory structure necessarily, because it's a piece of equipment. So it was just a question, I'm not debating it.
Alternate power source.
Whatever. Yeah, there you go.
That covers, right? Unless you've got chipmunks running it or something like that, I don't know.
Nothing on my... Okay. Anything else?
No.
Do we have any comments from the audience?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we close the public hearing. Second.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Hearing's closed. Next item then is approval of minutes from the June 8 meeting.
Still move? Second.
Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special reports, update on municipal response to COVID.
I think this will be our last update on COVID-19.
Let's hope so.
The reason I say that is, mostly, the vast majority of municipal employees are back at work. The park and rec department is up and running. Oh, you're done.
Oh, okay. No, wait. I see why you're so old.
The park and rec department is up and running. Their programs, offerings are going to be publicized on July 1. One of the first things they did, their summer camps are very popular. They deal within hours after being posted. The youth athletics programs have, as you know, for baseball and softball, have submitted protocols regarding COVID. Other sports are following suit, and that is, and they are moving forward. The bubble came down last Wednesday. The tennis center opened up for free play on Thursday and Friday. Then by Saturday, it is up and running as it normally would, and the staff there is all back, including the pros. The library is open. It intends to open back for normal operation, which will mean access to the entire building next Monday. So, at that point, we'll be pretty much squared away in terms of municipal operations when we back up and running.
Chief?
Quickly, thank you, Mr. Lauer. Mr. Lauer and I are working on contacting the county for the COVID-19 County Relief Block Grant Program. The state has issued $625 million in funding in total to all of the counties within the state. With this, there's a minimum amount that each county will receive, and a maximum with that as well. We are seeking information, but one of the 10 expenditure criteria for the counties, one of them is expenditures to the county's municipalities for equipment reimbursement and things like that that were experienced during COVID-19. This would be an excellent chance for us to recoup, what was it, Mr. Lauer, 70% or 75% of our recovery costs? With all of our costs in relation to personal protective equipment. The state has started publishing recovery data for patients as well, and this is good to see. Of the 82,186 cases in the state, 78% of those have been recovered. Obviously, some will never recover, and the other category is still having the disease. But them publishing that data is extremely helpful to us. And as we continue to wind down our efforts, the EOC and the municipality, which is housed at the fire station, was activated at a Level 2 status for the emergency operations plan. That simply means that it's up, it's running, it's manned, probably 16 hours in the day. Now it's been reduced to a Level 3 activation, where it's simply in its ready state, so we're scaling back as well. Anybody have any question?
I did.
Yes, ma'am.
You made a comment about winding down, and I guess what I'd like to clarify, there's been some recommendation that communities attempt to make sure not only do they have enough PPE, but they have a certain amount of stockpile, and I just wondered where we are with that particular aspect.
That's a great point.
Going forward in case the full resurgence occurs.
Whenever a resurgence occurs, and like we've discussed over and over again, I think every municipality in the county, especially in the state, and PMA themselves have noticed a deficiency in what their stockpile would have been. And speaking with representatives from Allegheny County, we are now seeing the ability to purchase PPE again through a normal procurement process. It's still at a expense level that's higher than normal. We're still at like the $5 per N95 mask, which is a lot higher than it was November 1 of last year. So we're experiencing larger expenditures there, but the availability is becoming ready again. And a lot of municipalities in Allegheny County, Allegheny County themselves, Washington County's in the same boat, they're not distributing materials anymore because we're finding ourselves being able to recur them on our own. We are doing that as a municipality now. We're not, I would say, buying more than we need, but we're buying an adequate amount should we have another resurgence again in October, November, December, over the winter months.
Thanks for that answer.
Yes. And that's in addition to what we currently have left over from what we just experienced still. We did not use all of our PPE equipment.
Other questions? Okay, thanks, Chief. Thanks, Chief. Okay. Next item is audience comments. We're still under the COVID suspension of in-person comments. We received, we received comments by email. These would be dealt with at the beginning of the meeting and responded to. Do we have any comments?
We do not.
No comments were received, so we go on to the next item, which is unfinished business. Being no unfinished business, we move on to new business. First item being request by Alex F. Paris Contracting Company to perform night work at the intersection of Beabout, Thompsonville, and McMurray Roads.
I think as everybody is aware, there has been construction activity on Thompsonville Road this spring that has involved replacement of the water line. In addition to that, there is the intention to replace the water line on Beabout Road. Both of those lines connect to a 20-inch line that runs down East McMurray Road. And so the request that you have in front of you is a request from Alex Paris, the contractor out there, to be able to do that work at night. And the rationale, as I understand it, and we have representatives here from Alex Paris, is twofold. One, daytime traffic on the road is significant, and the backups on that road will be significant if they do that. The other thing is, to be able to make the connection, they need to shut the water off. And it's their thought that they will inconvenience far less people by shutting the water off and doing that work during the night than they will if in fact they turn the water off during the day while people are awake. What we did was to send out notices to everyone within 300 feet of that intersection, so we probably sent out about 50? What's that? Forty-seven. Forty-seven. I was going to say somewhere around 50. Forty-seven notices. We asked people that, we gave them the opportunity, if they didn't want to be here tonight, to email to us. I don't think we've got any emails in. You do have people in the audience who do want to speak to this issue, though, so if you want, Alex Paris can... Do we know how many property owners are going to be affected by the water shut-off? They will. Can you come to the microphone? Identify yourself.
My name's Alexander Paris with Alex Paris Contracting. Pennsylvania American Water would be able to answer how many people would be affected. I know they have to shut down valves along East McMurray Road and on Beabout in Thompsonville. So us as a contractor, we don't know.
Does anyone, do we know if anyone is going to notify these people that their water's getting shut off?
There would be a 48-hour advance notice, yes.
Along with the fire company?
Yes.
This would be shut off each day for how many hours?
So typically, how it goes is around 8:00 at night, the water would be shut off. We're thinking it's going to take a total of three nights for the tie-in for Thompsonville and Beabout. The Thompsonville, we're tying into the 20-inch lock joint. The plan is for the first night to go down there, spot the 20-inch lock joint, the second night, do the initial cut-in tie-in, which is approximately a 10-by-30 hole. They're going to want to do a three-valve cluster in there, so it'd be a 20-by-12T, two 20-inch gate valves and a 12-inch gate valve. And then over on Beabout, we're actually tying into the 12-inch ductile iron, which we're thinking that's going to only take one evening. So, three nights total for everything.
A gate at night until when?
Usually about 5:00 AM.
Other comments from counsel? Anybody in the audience have a comment, question, sir?
If you could have a seat there. If you need to, by yourself, and you're at, instead of the microphone. Well, it's okay, but the person likely these minutes do those things.
Mark Sanders, 460 Thompsonville Road. If you look at the picture, the third house down on the left-hand side with the orange Jeep, good target, okay? Let's not do this at night. Absolutely not at night. There was a comment made about people going back to work. There's a lot of people still not going back to work, that are still at home all day. I, for one, work from my house all day right now with the lockdown. Paul is correct. The traffic on Thompsonville Road is out of control with the construction at Snowberry and the new plant at the bottom of the hill. We hear trucks all day long, up and down, from crack of dawn till evening, and now we're going to start new trucks up at 8:00 PM, when it's time for us to finally get some peace. Absolutely not. It's not, it's not a good choice. Do the work during the day. If the problem is Thompsonville Road, close the road. Thompsonville Road was closed back in either 2002 or 2003 for the little bridge at the bottom of the hill, at the S-turns. It was closed for probably three weeks. So if they need three nights to do this, let's close Thompsonville Road during the days, alleviate that traffic, send a detour, and let us have our peace at night.
I just want to be sure, one thing, Mr. Sanders, is it Thompsonville that needs to be closed, or is it East McMurray that needs to be closed?
We're tying into both lines lying along East McMurray. We're going to be crossing, yeah, we're going to basically, for Beabout, we're going to be crossing complete intersection and the existing 20-inch lock joint.
It's East McMurray?
It's East McMurray Road.
You may want to consider some detours for this project if it's going to go up, and let's find some alternate ways around. Thompsonville Road, as we all know, is a very good cut from one end of the township to get to 19 and 79. We see it every morning and every night. We don't need to be shut down at night. The other issues you come up with night, we had a sewer line broken in front of the house when they were doing the gas line. I don't think the township engineer wants to roll out with somebody from the sanitary authority during the evening. These people are on staff during the day if anything comes up like that, or if we have another gas line break, they're going to get there in time to help us out. I don't believe you would let this happen in your neighborhood for three nights in your neighbors. We don't want it in our neighborhood either. So let's do it during the day, make some accommodations with some detours in the area. If you have to close Thompsonville, or you have to close Beabout, there are alternate routes around. routes around. We would truly appreciate that. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Any response from anybody? Comments? Mr. Paris, any comment?
Is the reason that you guys want to do the work at night because you figure that less people are going to be inconvenienced by the water being shut off at night than during the day, is that?
Yes. Obviously, it's a safety concern for everybody, too. Obviously, we're going to have a, for the 20-inch lock joint, we're probably going to have almost a 10-by-30 hole open. We don't typically have road plates that big to cover a hole that big for emergency reasons and things like that. Also, you know, open cutting across the road for Beabout over the time of the 12-inch, it's going to be more of a challenge, definitely, yes.
Okay, we're talking three nights?
Well, it'd be two nights for the 20-inch, and then one night for the 12-inch.
It's a total of three.
Yes.
And you're confident you can get it done in those three nights?
Well, that's, that's, yeah, we're pretty confident. That's why we're giving ourselves the window to pre-dig on the 20-inch lock joint the night before. In case there's any concern, we can stop everything and figure out the game plan from there.
And if you did it during the day instead, would it take longer?
Yeah, because we would have to, we would have to stop and start, get the road plates moved, let traffic go for 15 minutes, stop, move them. Yeah, it's, it's going to definitely take a lot longer.
If the roads didn't have to be, if, in fact, they closed the entire intersection and did a detour as Mr. Sanders suggested, do you think it would shave time off of your actual work across both areas?
You mean along East McMurray Road, too?
If they closed that intersection, if they said, starting at one point, starting at the other, you can't go through here, find another way?
Yes. I mean, it would basically be like working at night, eliminating the traffic congestion.
Is that even reasonable, Mr. Lauer?
I don't think, I don't know how you'd do that. No, I'm just, I'm trying. I think you're absolutely right. That would be the ideal scenario. But I, thinking of that intersection, I don't know how you would ever detour traffic coming from all four directions. I don't know how you would do that.
Especially if it's Bethel Park.
Coming from Bethel Park, you have to go down Brookwood.
And cut over.
Come and cut over.
Well, you can, I mean, everyone can go up to 19, or you can go the other direction.
Thank you.
You know, I mean, it would be longer, obviously, but I guess I'm asking if it's two days instead of three nights, is it? I don't know. I'm just trying to. Because the mitigating circumstances Mr. Sanders brought up was the additional construction traffic at Juniper Woods, which, you know, I hadn't even thought about when we were talking about.
But I look at it as the bigger concern, what inconveniences less people?
No, I don't disagree.
You know, and the idea of a bunch of township residents being without water during daylight hours for three days, especially if you've got little kids, I imagine is a lot more difficult than sleeping through the night without water. So I'll make a motion that we approve Alex Paris's request to perform the night work at the intersection of Beabout, Thompsonville, and East McMurray Roads for no more than three nights.
Do a second. Second. Any other discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
We have, we have four to three? Okay, it's approved. Okay. All right, that's what it is. Next item, the C. Award of a Bid to Repair Storm Sewer Was Crossed Shady Lane.
The 2020 budget includes an appropriation of $300,000 for storm sewer management projects, including storm sewer repairs, the MS4 project, and detention pond rehabilitation. To date, we've spent $190,750. This leaves a balance of $109,275. This project is an attempt to slip line a deteriorated culvert underneath Shady Lane. We took bids on this back in February. The reason why this has not come to council prior to this is that we have been working with the adjacent property owner to get access to his property to be able to do this repair. That became a little bit more difficult when COVID-19 came along. We have not reached an agreement with him on getting that access. So we'd like to suggest that we award a bid to State Pipe Services for $67,950. We haven't necessarily worked with these, these companies, but both of our sanitary authorities have, and they've had success with them. Mark's confident that they have the capabilities of being able to do this project, so.
I'll move that we award the project to State Pipe Services for the amount of $67,950 for the Shady Lane project.
Do a second.
Second.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is proposed partnership to solve drainage problem at 129 Fireside.
So once again, we have a project in front of us where we have a property owner who is suffering damage as a result of water that's flowing onto his property. The individual is located here, who drives, sits above that. And what was discovered was that there is a swale that was installed apparently back when this plan was constructed, and it dumps onto this property. And this is a picture that goes back to 1993, before the house was built, and you can clearly see this swale. And you can clearly see that this was the location where that swale was to dump onto. Now, we're not sure why the swale was there. We don't know whether it's a remnant from a soil erosion plan, or whether it was put in to provide protection to these homes. We know at this point it does provide protection to these homes. And given where it's located on private property, there's no way to remove it. So this water is coming this way. The house, when the house was constructed, this didn't prove to be a problem. He's got a wet, he's had a wet backyard, but the problem he's having now is the amount of water that we've had in recent years has caused this, the flow, and now he's having this water back up against his house. There's no way for him to solve this problem without assistance from us, because there's nowhere to take the water to. It's, you know, it's kind of ending up here. So we think the solution is to extend our public sewer a very short distance, and then there needs to be an extension of the line onto his property with a catch base in here to catch this water and get it out to the street. He may well have to do some piping in here as well. What we know, we think we need to be willing to do is this small extension, and this actually is an extension we can do in-house. This is certainly within the capabilities of the work department. The thing that I think that Mark and I and Ed are struggling with is that this is unlike other problems like this that we've encountered before. So like, if you take the Mr. Lee's property over on Redwood, where he had a similar situation, the difference is that that was the natural contour of the land, and that's what directed the water into his backyard. Here, there's a man-made structure that concentrates this water onto this property. And, you know, should he have seen that when he bought it? Yes. Is it, was it intended to be there? I have no idea. And so the question is whether or not we ought to provide some assistance beyond simply doing this and maybe cover some of the cost of the materials and leave the installation to him. We certainly don't want to own this line.
Of all I remember, that lot was vacant for a long period of time. And I remember, before that house was built, you could always see canals in that lot, because the water would make its natural course going down the hills. So I have a hard time believing that when he bought the lot, he didn't know that, is he the first owner?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think he's the first owner after the development.
So I mean, I have a hard time believing anyone who bought that lot wouldn't have known that there was an issue there, because even I remember as like a teenager, when I had friends who lived in that neighborhood, you would drive by, and you could literally see the canals in that lot that were formed by the water coming down the hill.
He may not have bought the lot, though.
That's what I was going to say, if he's not the original owner.
Well, the builder may have bought the lot.
I think that would be.
I don't know, but.
I could be wrong on that.
According to the gentleman, well, he blocked a lot, I believe, in building his own house. It was like 18 or 19 years ago. So he's lived with this for a while, and his claim, Ed and I, I met with him and observed the problem, and locked the swale and everything, and, you know, one of the obvious questions was, you know, why is this coming up now if this has existed for, you know, 18 years since you built the house? And he, his contention is that the wet years we've been having recently has just exacerbated the problem. He knew he always had a problem, but he just kind of dealt with it, and it wasn't that big of an issue. But, you know, this year's been fairly odd, but the year before, especially the year before that, I guess he's had some pretty severe problems. So that's why he called on him.
And there wasn't anyone upstream that did anything in their yard or anything that would have changed the water course or anything like that?
But, Mr. Zomitis, if the developer put a swale in there, and for us to say we don't know how that happened is a little concerning since we're supposed to be aware of the plan. You know, if the developer did build that and directed and ended it there, he knew where the water was going to go. So I don't think we can.
Which is why he probably got, I bet he probably got a pretty good deal on that lot whenever he bought it.
Possibly, but, and.
And it's why it was the last lot developed.
Right, right, exactly.
Right, and I agree, KBODM, or, you know, he maybe should have known, but the point is it isn't a man-made problem. Do we have any recourse against the developer? I don't even know who did it.
There's no institutional law or shooting council for coming to that as well. And this was 1980, early, early, I think this time was 50, 1980.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have any issue with extending the storm sewer over to where you have to on the street so that you can pull that line down. I just, we start contributing money towards installing lines on individuals' private property. I think we're heading down a dangerous slope.
And what you're suggesting is what we have done on all other projects. And like I said, the only thing in my mind that makes this different is that this swale was created as a result of it being developed. And it's actually a man-made structure, this directing the water that we don't normally have.
How much are we talking about?
Right.
Again, less than $5,000.
But it's less than $5,000 for this, but if we provide this pipe?
Still probably in the ballpark of $5,000.
All right. I move that we authorize the appropriate township official to execute a partnership agreement with Mr. Lee to resolve the existing stormwater problem of 109 Redwood Drive.
It should be joint venture. I don't want to be partners with this.
Could you modify that? Which part are we resolving? Are we doing only the red part, or are you suggesting that we would do the green?
Whatever it takes to resolve the existing stormwater problem.
The red and the green, possibly.
No, I don't think I'm in agreement with that. I think we can do the red part.
And again, if it was me, at the most I would do is help participate in the materials. I would not install that.
Well, wait, Paul, where's his lot line there? Because where you've got the green line, looks like it's on the next guy's door.
This is off our GIS.
Okay, I was making sure, because the way that looks, it looks like you're putting it on the next guy's lot.
No. Is anybody else up there experiencing any water problems like that way?
Well, his neighbor directly downstream is impacted by this swale as well, because it kind of comes down the slope in his backyard, and then kind of cascades into the neighbor's yard, too. So we've not had a conversation with the neighbor yet. That was something that, you know, we're going to have to do moving forward, and there might be an opportunity for them to participate as well.
Well, wait a second. If you do that, though, Mark, why can't you just run the pipe through both of their backyards and then run it down the other guys, the other side of the next door, the next neighbor's property, and run it down to the catch base in that way, then?
Yeah, but I don't know. I think what we're asking for right now is, do you have a problem with us going out and trying to negotiate a solution here? And then we're going to come back to you with that, that agreement. So we haven't even talked to that neighbor.
So if the motion modified to that, and that would make sense to me.
I would just read my motion the way I originally said it.
And that's all we need.
But what doesn't seem fair to me is that if you negotiate something with the current property owner, and as Frank said, if the other guys have problems, his neighbor's fixing his problem.
Right.
And that, to me, doesn't seem fair. I mean, I think if you're going to have a conversation, you need to talk to him and his neighbor.
And we will. And we will. But what I don't want to do is go out and talk, and this is where Mark and I are trying to get direction. We don't want to go out and talk to these people if council's not prepared for us to bring back an agreement, because we don't want to sit there and say, here's what we can do for you, and then come bring it back to council.
Yeah, the motion is to let them negotiate an agreement.
Yes.
Correct.
However it turns out.
Okay, negotiate.
Yeah, but we don't have to prove it, right?
Oh, yeah, we do not.
It's just, it's, take it back to the agreement, it's good.
So it's to negotiate, not execute a partnership agreement? All righty, thank you.
Joint venture.
Joint venture.
No partners.
Okay, a joint venture.
Semantical.
Okay, is there a second? Do we got a second to that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A resolution authorizing township manager to sign a required notification under Bituminous Mines Subsidance and Land Conservation Act contained in the deed, transferring property owned by Valleybrook Property LLC to Peters Township.
Mr. Chairman, I will state, as a matter of fact, that there is no requirement under Pennsylvania law that the grantee sign the coal clause, but I'll move that we authorize the manager to sign it.
I'll second.
I was going to say that myself.
Okay, dueling lawyers, that's good. Okay, any other discussion on that? In favor?
I, I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I have a problem with the deed, because I don't think that the recorder's office will take this without a subdivision.
There is a subdivision.
Oh, there is? That's not what it seems to say.
This subdivision occurred previously with council. This property is actually subdivided off. That's what.
Why does it say designated as a portion of parcel number bump de glump? If there's, if there's a plan filed, then it should have already have issued.
Yeah, but I don't, it's not recorded yet.
That one, they may have to amend that, depending on which person they get at the recorder's office and what day they take it up.
They'll send you next door, and then the guy will be like, why are you here? And I'm like, I don't know, they just sent me over.
It happened to me last week, so.
Yeah.
All right, appoint a traffic engineer.
On April 27th, we accepted proposals from a number of firms, nine, to respond to an RFP for traffic engineering services. After a review of the submittals, we determined that there were five firms that we felt we needed to interview, and those included HRG, TPD, Panoni, Trans Associates, and Stoll Schaefer. Following the interviews, it was the consensus of Mr. Zomitis, Mr. Zooka, myself, that traffic planning and design be retained in capacity as the consulting traffic engineer. That being said, we would be confident that the HRG and Trans Associates could also meet the township's need for a traffic engineer. One of the reasons why I had recommended that we go out and request proposals is that we were having a problem with TPD and timely responses to our request. We also had concerns about the execution of the Green Light Go project down here. One of the things that I, during this process that I learned, you know, TPD actually is a fair-sized firm, but in Western Pennsylvania, it's, it's staffing isn't, they have a few professional staffers. have a few professional staffers. Mr. Madri, who's been the traffic engineer for the township for a number of years, he had things occurring in his personal life with regard to family health and that, that have affected his capacity to be able to respond on a timely basis. That being said, one of the things that has happened at TPD is that they've hired in Amanda Purcell, and she is, she was the former traffic engineer for the city of Pittsburgh for the past 13 years, and, um, having met and interviewed her, her, I, I think her credentials and her experience will serve the township well, and I think it addresses that concern we had with, with Mr. Madri's ability to always respond in a timely fashion. The other thing about, um, Mr. Madri is that he has a tremendous familiarity with the township, he is very nearby, and where we sometimes, in the recent past, have had problems with him completing projects on a timely basis, in terms of getting him here for meetings on short notice, he's always been willing and able to do that. He is very familiar with our traffic impact fee program, he's helped us modify it in the past, and for that reason, I, it's my recommendation, and it's, uh, Mark Zomitis' and Ed Zook's recommendation, that council appoint TPD to serve as the township's engineer. And for what it's worth, his fees are actually less than, than the other firms that we interviewed.
I'll, I'll make that motion that we appoint TPD as the township traffic.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I had a question to clarify. You indicated that they would be doing monthly reports to help with the timeliness and, you know, make sure you knew where they were status-wise?
Yes.
And I presume these will be billable while we're resolved, so...
What, to prepare the report? I would assume so.
So, is this gonna be just temporary for this year until you see whether the improvement?
Well, I think what we have come up with is a, a work order process that we're gonna use. I don't think it's, you're gonna spend a tremendous amount of money to produce these monthly reports, in fact, in the docket is attached to Mr. Zomitis' engineering report is the first of these. They're only a couple pages long, I can't imagine that they're gonna be a tremendous expense, but from us, it's gonna be useful in terms of being able to keep track of the various projects he's always working on.
Thank you.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Accept the 2019 comprehensive annual financial report.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the 2019 comprehensive annual financial report.
Okay, discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Authorize the appropriate township officials to execute five-year labor agreement with the Laborers District Council of Western Pennsylvania, Local 1058.
We had talked about this at the last meeting in executive session while we were in the process of negotiating this. Last Thursday, the members of the Peters Township Public Works Department met together with their business agent from the union and have ratified this agreement. So, it's a five-year contract, which I believe to be to our advantage, and, for that matter, it believed to be the advantage of the employees. It calls for a series of wage increases. That first increase represents a 2.98% increase. By the time you get out here, this drops down below 2.5%. The important thing, I think, to also keep in mind is that for this union, the pension is an hourly rate, that's for hours' work, so it's, when you want to look at what the compensation is inside that public works department, you need to add these two things together throughout the contract, there will be no increase in our contribution for the pension, so I think that's significant. We've had some challenges with sick leave use inside the department, we came up with a, a method of paid time off that I believe is gonna remedy that, that problem and result in a savings of $23,000 a year, so I, I, I think this is a positive thing. The contract before would not allow part-time workers to be working necessarily on weekends without full-time help. One of the things that occurs throughout the summer right now is that on Saturday and Sunday, you have two individuals coming in, working overtime for half the day to maintain the picnic areas and the restrooms. When Rolling Hills Park comes online, I think what you're gonna end up is needing two individuals to work all day on Saturday and Sunday. You know, what I had expressed to the union was that we were prepared to have full-time people do that, but we weren't prepared to have them do that on overtime. The alternative was to allow part-time people to come in, their preference was to have part-time people come in in the weekend rather than the work Saturdays and Sundays at straight time. Seasonal employees have a restriction on what they can do, this expands to allow them to at least operate riding, riding motors, so seasonal employees now can do that. There's a provision for high-option dental, currently the only group here that gets high-option dental is the police department. This is being offered to them on a voluntary basis, and they're gonna pick up the incremental cost for doing that, so they can opt in and out of this every year. They have always been subject to our drug and alcohol policy, but what this does is it clar, it, it designates them as safety-sensitive employees, and what that means for us, which I think is very important, it allows us to test a much broader panel of drugs, and so, under the current situation, you could not check for, for instance, opioids. By being classified as a safety-sensitive employee, you cannot do that. And then finally, the language in the contract that was existing was not precise with regards to break-in service. It isn't like we have this occur a lot, but for situations where people become ill over a long extended period of time, it clearly defines when you're no longer an employee. I think it's a very fair agreement on both sides, like I said, Westers, they, they approve it. So, what I am hoping is the council will authorize the chairman of council to execute this labor agreement. So moved.
Second. All in favor? Do you have a question?
Aye, but I do have a question.
Sure.
The dates of the top of the wages are January 1st. Are, can you explain that? Because I thought we specifically moved the contract so it wouldn't expire at the end of the year.
It does not expire at the end of the year, but in 2008, the union requested, and we approved, moving the date for wage increases to January of the year. So, the contract continues to run till May.
Okay.
The increases go into effect in January, so they had received an increase in January of this year, and so therefore, this goes into effect now.
Thank you, I didn't recall that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I think that's a really good contract, Mr. Lara, I think you guys did a great job on it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's a job.
Ryan, yes, absolutely. Payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the accounts payable and the payroll report. Two things of note on accounts payable, $88,000 for the new playground and $43,000 for Liberoni's final work on Rolling Hills Phase One roadway. Payroll has obviously increased due to staff being called back to work. I find the checks to be in order and move that we approve them.
Second.
Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, correspondence.
Well, the one item under correspondence that I do want to bring your attention is a letter from the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority. They have received notification from the Clerk Municipal Authority that there will be no TAPS issued this year for their service area. This is the result of a, I believe it's a result of a, a case that's been filed by the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority against the Clerk Municipal Authority, and seeking remedies for what they believe to be improper administration of their wastewater treatment agreement. There, I, I had a chance to speak to Mr. Bernado, who is the attorney for the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority, I also had a chance to speak to Mr. Mata, who is the attorney for the Clerk Municipal Authority. I, I fear what this is going to, going to mean for the township. One of the things that's going to be occurring is that on July 9th, there is going to be a meeting of the members of the Peters Creek, of the upstream communities, including South Park, Jefferson Hills, Peters Creek Sanitary Authority. I've got myself invited to that meeting. We can talk about this in executive session, because I do think eventually this is gonna involve litigation that we may want to participate in, but I think we're gonna have a clearer understanding of that after this July 9th meeting, so...
All right. Reports, anybody want to discuss anything under reports?
I would like to just make a comment, Mr. Chairman, about the financial report. First, I'd like to recognize Mr. Jeroski, because during this COVID pandemic, he has done a lot of going's job in trying to move all of our accounts over to Washington Financial, and we're almost completely finished with that, so I just wanted to recognize his work on that, and, so we should be in the clear pretty soon.
Okay, thank you.
You know, the one that I want to point out to you, and, and, certainly the fire department, their main mission is the suppression of fires and fire safety, but every once in a while, I see things, and there's an incident in, in their report that I can think is kind of noteworthy, because it speaks to our police department and our fire department. On May 29th, at 3:00 in the morning, a police officer pulls over a driver who has children in the car who are not in car seats. The officer calls over to the fire station, happens to get Captain Frazier, who's a certified installer, who picks up two car seats, takes them to the scene, installs them so that the kids can continue home in, in a car seat. I don't know of too many municipalities where that's going to occur, and it speaks a lot to Officer Mazada, who thought to make that telephone call, but it speaks all kinds of things about Captain Frazier, about willing to go out and do that, so...
Okay, well...
I, I would note that in the police report, there was a funny, it was a funny arrest where a gentleman allegedly locked himself out of the car, and so he called the police. Did you see that? He called the police, and then the police opened the door and allegedly had a strong odor of marijuana emanating out of the vehicle, and I think they, I don't think they arrested him, I think they just charged him, but I thought that was, I mean, I read them, and that's...
When you're stoned, you're not making...
Huh?
So, when you're stoned, you're not making a sound decision. It's probably not one of the better decisions of the day.
Probably, yeah, it's probably, yeah, but I just thought it was kind of a funny one.
Okay, Mr.... You got a lot of marijuana things, I think out of the, the 25 or so reports we had.
Oh, yeah. More, I think more, more, I think there's almost as many marijuana cases as there are alcohol-related cases.
Okay, anything under miscellaneous that needs to be discussed?
Um, yes. Had a chance to meet with Mr. Courtney, actually, I met with Eddie Courtney, Ed's son, and Mrs. Courtney, to discuss the parking along here, and what they brought with them is what, something that doesn't surprise me, is that you can go back, and they had pictures over multiple years, where this entire parking lot gets filled with trail parkers, and, and no, at no time was that worse than when, when everybody, they stay home in order, and everybody filled this parking lot from one end to the other. So, they understand their obligation under the agreement, but the agreement says that they'll provide, and this, where this in blue is actually township property, but they'll allow access across the bridge for parking along here and down in this area for trail parking, but it is that they're, they were giving up their entire parking lot, including on their property for this use, so what they're, and this would be difficult to do, but what they're suggesting is, we go in and market. One of the things Mrs. Courtney pointed out, and she's absolutely right about, we probably ought to have a couple handicap spots in here, because we don't really have handicap parking, and this may, this is an excellent way to get onto the trail for somebody with a disability, and to sign it, and then to enforce the signs. And the only way you're gonna enforce those signs is you're gonna have to, from time to time, have a police officer down there who views people parking and going onto the trail in, from restricted parking spaces, and issuing tickets, that's the only way that's gonna happen, so... I told them I would discuss that with you, I, I think it's a, I think it's a, a fair compromise in terms of, it gets you back to what it is we actually agreed to. But I will tell you, just as the no parking on the grass signs in Peterswood Park generates telephone calls into here, we start issuing tickets down here, we'll get telephone calls.
But if we don't issue tickets, it's not going to...
It would, yes.
We can't park it without any bike.
Well, we don't have any right to overburden their property either. If we're awarded a certain number of spots, that's what the resident should be using.
But you're gonna need big signs.
Oh, we're gonna have to have signs that are enforceable, and I've gotta work with chief crimes and a solicitor to make sure that under our current ordinance, we can do that, or whether we may have to come back with a...
But you're gonna need big signs.
Yeah, you said enforceable signs, we're talking about big signs.
Okay.
We'll send the overflow to the lot next to Jim's house.
What, how many tenants are in the building right now?
Um, right now, that, there's only two tenants, the youth ballet is still there, and we, was it, we buy any car.
Yeah, it really doesn't make any difference how many people are there, there could be nobody there, and we still really shouldn't be parking on their property.
That's right.
I, I don't disagree with that, Mr. Ball, it was just a question of practical matter. We do require him to provide a certain number of parking spaces, which he's doing for his building, so yes, those are his. I was just asking the question, because, in truth, if they're not being parked on by a tenant, I mean, what is the harm? The problem is, they probably overrun the place, and then the tenant parking can't take place.
So, and yeah, we're gonna pursue it on that basis.
All right.
Excuse me, if we do this, are we going to memorialize this agreement, since it was a handshake and this came up?
We can, we can.
If you can get him to sign it.
Like I say, in terms of issuing tickets on here, it's gonna be easy, because this is our property, and so it's gonna be parking on municipal property that's gonna get you a fine.
Well, I think you have to do it, if we're gonna give out tickets, we're gonna have something to base it on.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll be working on it. Next thing I want to talk about, we have, we have accepted proposals for, for design of the aquatic center for Rolling Hills, we're in the process of evaluating those proposals. My question to council is, how you wanna proceed on this? You know, often on, when we're hiring consultants, the staff is reviewing these proposals and placing in front of council, you know, a single recommendation. The nature of this project, though, seems to me warrants council having the opportunity to, to interview the top two or three consultants, and I just wanted to find out, is that how you wish to proceed?
How many proposals did you get?
We have 12 proposals. We, having reviewed those, our intention is to start out with interviews of four of those firms. We think four of them clearly are heads and shoulders above...
Okay, and, and what are they proposing? I mean, are they proposing indoor, outdoor, indoor, outdoor?
What they're proposing is to, to help us answer the question whether an indoor facility makes sense. One of the things we want to talk to them about, we're gonna be doing this this week as part of our interview, is what do they believe the process is for doing that and being able to help council make a rational decision as to what we ought to be doing there, so... But, a couple of the firms, these are teams, so you have a architect, you have a civil engineer, and you have somebody whose, whose specialty is the design of aquatic centers. Two of the, two of the four proposals are using the same aquatics consultant, and so, at the very least, we're gonna whittle one of those proposals down, so there'll be down to three, and it may be two, and so, my only question is, I, I take it council would like to interview those?
Well, I would think that we should, just as we do at the park, but...
Well, I would think that we should, just as we do at the park, but I have to ask if this is really the right time to do that with the uncertainty arising from COVID, the revenue, or just the uncertainty of what social distance they're going to have next year and the following year.
Now, I agree with you, Gary. I'm not sure that we live in the same world that we lived in a year ago, and I'm not sure that if you sent out that pool survey again, now that the number of residents that were in favor of it last year would still be in favor of it. Quite honestly, I don't know how comfortable I'd be right now taking my kids to a public pool, you know, and I don't... Well, that may change in six months, and I don't know. There may be a lot of people who just decide they're never going to go to a public pool again. So maybe the question is, are we really doing the right thing right now, spending this money, or should we maybe earmark that money for your fire? No, I shouldn't say your firehouse.
Oh, I'm all even sure of that.
You know, but is there a better way to be spending that money right now than to be putting it towards an aquatics facility that may not be well-attended? I don't know.
I agree with Frank and Gary, Mr. Coles and Mr. Skibell, both for, for both reasons. I think that the demand for a community pool is definitely changed. I think we see every report that people are building their own in-ground pools. Maybe people are going to use those instead. And I agree that the timing might really not be appropriate at this particular juncture.
Well, I noticed also, Paul, in the, in the permit list here, there's a lot of swing pools that people have applied for this year for permits.
And this is not a Peters Township, this is a Western Pennsylvania.
You know, I have a friend who's trying to order one, and he was told it's at least a 12-week backlog right now just to get the pool, let alone actually get somebody out there to dig the hole to put the pool in.
We've been told by some of the installers they're, they're working into the fall.
Wow. Well, does it, does it cost us anything to interview these people?
Doesn't cost you anything. It's, you know, it's cost them to put the proposals together. And again, I don't, you know, I don't have any idea of what next year looks like in terms of this. The thing that I do know is that the pool isn't an investment for a year. The pool was an investment for 25 or 30 years, and so...
But the question is, when we started, and if we, in my mind, here's, here's the question, is that, you know, we can go ahead and talk to these people now, get an idea of what they're talking about. I mean, that's, it's not, it's not a problem. But is that going to be something that's transmittable, you know, whether we decide to go ahead this year, next year, two or three or four years from now?
Frank could be right.
But is that a reasonable assumption?
Forever.
Is that a reasonable assumption if they give us, for example, budget estimates or some idea?
That's what I'm saying. It's, you know, is it, is it something that, that's useful? Or in, or are we stringing along these guys for a proposal which costs them money?
They've already invested that.
They've already invested. They've spent that money. And, and, you know, and again, I, I don't have a position one way or the other whether or not you build a pool, but if you design it, it doesn't mean you have to bid it at that moment. You can bid it at some point in the future. I mean, even right now, if you decided tomorrow that we were going to go ahead with this, we're not talking about opening a pool up next May. You're talking about opening a pool up...
Twenty-two.
Okay. So the other question I would have then is what, do we know what the CDC is going to put out in terms of guidelines for those types of facilities that may be engineered in the facility itself, rather than an existing pool being reserved? I think all that needs to be considered before going.
Well, it's been well over 25 years that this council has been undecided for the benefit of whether to march ahead with the pool. I don't see any expenditure that this council is making to entertain and listen to the presentations and at least gather the insight as to where we, where we may go. I, I'm not surprised by any of your reluctantly, but I have to speak up for the fact that I've carried this banner for well over 25 years. For the people that haven't had access to the pools this year, they're almost hostile. And I don't see any diminished interest among the people that have swimmers in their family or young kids with regard to use of the pools.
And the one thing I will tell you is that, you know, when we had a pre-bid meeting online, and one of the things I told all the bidders is I have no idea of how the pandemic affects council's interest in this project. And so, you know, that's something they know upfront. I'm sure it's something they're facing other places. I think your question, Gary, is a good one to pose to, to them is, you know, are you in a position to be able to, to design around the pandemic? I don't know that.
No, it's not the pool itself that is the...
It's all the facility.
Contaminant, I guess. It's the facilities around it, whether it be a playground, or chairs, or whatever becomes the symptom. And I think, I guess, I also want to say that we've, we had an excellent report that Ryan put together with regard to the township's finances. And to me, I was very surprised by its encouraging representation, that our potential revenues haven't suffered anywhere near what I might have expected them to become.
And we're going to have a crystal-clear idea of that come...
I understood that.
Well, I'll tell you, from a Valley Book perspective, our pool is extremely busy, and our social membership is just about to reach its maximum. And again, social members mostly there for the swimming pool.
Does anybody have a problem listening to these things?
I don't.
No, no.
I'm going to do a 12 of them.
You're going to get, you're going to get two or three hits what you're going to get.
Well, I don't think it hurts to listen.
I don't either.
But there are these issues that you have to think about in conjunction with that. But I mean, they went through all that work. I mean, I think we should, we should at least listen to what they have to say.
Okay. When do you want to schedule these four, Paul?
I don't know that yet. I'll get back to you.
Won't be next week, right?
They will not be next week.
Thank you.
The last thing I wanted to talk about is, you know, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled on June 15th with regard to the 1964 Civil Rights Act barring sex discrimination in the workplace. And that decision extends that protection to LGBTQ employees. I guess the other reason, the thing that I want to point out to council is that when we had this discussion previously, it was my contention that we did not need to do anything because our position with regard to equal employment opportunities as a practical matter, we only look at ability to get a job done. And the other thing is, if you look at the, what we describe as the protected classes, it's exactly what was under consideration by the Supreme Court. And so therefore, I don't think at this point in time, we need to do anything to amend our employee handbook. So I agree with you.
Mr. Chairman, I had just one thing related to trees. Two points. We received notice from West Penn Power that they'll be doing work in the township.
Yes.
And I know that they communicate with Mr. Zemitis usually. Will that be posted on the website so people have kind of an advance notice when they might be in the neighborhood or working on certain main roads?
You know what? I've seen the notice that they're going to be in town, but I don't know where they're going to be, and that we need to find out.
The second thing related to that, we had taken down a number of trees, the public works people and some other companies, the ashbowl trees. And I just wondered, we've never talked about a plan, a formal plan to replant, and I just wondered, do we have anything in the works for that?
I do not think that it would be appropriate, given where, for the most part, where we're taking trees now, we're taking them out of the right-of-way. And it's their presence in the right-of-way that has caused the concern, and I don't think it's appropriate to be planting up against the right-of-way again. So like, you know, if you look at the different roads, McClellan or Santa Trail, you do not want to be planting back in that area.
Well, and I'm sorry I wasn't clear. I wasn't necessarily saying to replant in those areas, but there's a lot of argument about planting a tree for every tree that's removed. We could certainly put them somewhere else in the township. That's the only thing I asked.
And I think a couple of years ago, I had suggested that we get seedlings and we plant in the open spaces in the township. I guess what I've noticed over the last couple of years is, you know, they say everything sort of goes back to nature. All those areas where the ash trees were killed off now seem to have been occupied by wild pear trees or other things. So it looks like nature is doing a decent job of reforesting itself right now. But I would still like to do that at some time, Paul. I'd like to discuss that with you about planting some of our barren banks with seedlings. I understand you have the contacts and you could get them for us.
Perhaps a Boy Scout project.
Yeah, it could be a great Boy Scout project.
Glad you're a Boy Scout.
Or a Girl Scout project, let's be clear on that.
You'd be careful.
Paul, regarding trees, we talked about all of the timber that was taken down along Center Church for the new tower line that came in.
And I don't have an answer on that yet. We're, Ed and I are working on that, so.
They were actually there today picking up some logs right by Center Presbyterian. They had the road closed one way or one way.
That's encouraging, but I hadn't seen anything, and I just wanted to put it back under the burner. Okay. Anything else? Any items for next agenda?
I wondered, I've had a number of people inquiring about water's development and just getting a little bit of detail. Would we be able to get an update on where they are and...
Sure.
Just a little bit more about how they're progressing and things like that.
Anything else? We have a executive session.
Yes.
Okay. Rejourned.